All right, well, happy birthday Brenna. Here we go. The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, June 23, 2015, and it is 6:00 PM. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Before we have the invocation, I'd like you all to take a moment and reflect on the past week events in Charleston, South Carolina, and do what we can in our own personal lives to do away with racism. Thank you Heavenly Father Jesus for this day that you've made for us. Thank you Heavenly Father for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We know Heavenly Father Jesus that it's your desire that each and every one come to know you in a greater special way. Tonight Heavenly Father Jesus is our city council and staff gather and meet and do the work of the city. We just ask that you bless each one of them. You know, at times they need wisdom and courage, and we ask that you provide that. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you bless each one in this community. And as we go about our daily lives Heavenly Father, we just ask that you give us the strength and the wisdom to be like the church in South Carolina that shows love and peace and understanding, that there be no more hatred, and we just ask Heavenly Father Jesus, bless each thing that's said here tonight, and we'll give you the praise and thanks for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please be seated. Roll call please.
Council authority member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council authority member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council authority member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. Before we continue on, we have two additional on the roll call. Jacob Campbell, say here, and then Jackson Campbell. All right, we have, and who are you, young lady?
Me?
No, not you behind me. Maya, welcome Maya. Conflict of interest, any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
Yes, I have a conflict with Agenda Item 5.2.
I also have a conflict with Agenda Item 5.2.
And I have a conflict with 5.2 and what's the other one? 6.1.
And I also have a conflict with Item 5.2, and that's, when we get to it, I will draw straws for those who'll be up here to make the decisions. Presentations, Item 1.1, update from Riverbank Stanislaus Consolidated Fire District Representative, and welcome.
Mayor O'Brien, council members, thanks for having me again tonight. Sorry it was a little bit late. Sorry I missed it. Part of it. So an update from Consolidated lately, our chief has been working with city staff to choose the second location for the second station in Riverbank, as well as the developer that will be paid through the developer fees, and so that's been moving along, which is very nice. He's been working really hard with a committee to recruit for the new fire marshal. We had an interim fire marshal for a little while, and now we're looking to hire a permanent fire marshal. We have two new engines going into service very soon. One will be here in Riverbank, and the other one will be at Station 31 in the airport area, and we're hoping for the first week of July for those to go into service. The others will go back into reserve status, just as backup. We do have a backup ladder truck that's going to be moved to Oakdale's West Station. It will not be their first out engine, but it will be an engine to serve on significant fires both throughout the entire district. Oakdale City has agreed to pay for all maintenance while it is housed there, so that's a little bit of a relief for us financially with its maintenance, but then we also have the benefit of it still responding as they do come to our city quite often. We have a balanced budget this year and no increase in our assessment, and so we were very happy with Chief Bradley for getting that together for us. The initial proposal had the 3% increase, which we haven't had in a couple of years, and he was great at finding ways to cut down the budget and look for some different revenue sources that were new to him being in this position in our district, and so we're very pleased to have a balanced budget without having to increase the assessment this year. And that's pretty much it as far, oh no, that's not true. There is one other thing. I don't know if you guys noticed in, a couple of months ago, we started seeking out new legal counsel, and this week we have a special meeting scheduled for Thursday where we're hoping to, after going through the interview process and reviewing all of the proposals, to hopefully have our new legal counsel in place this week. Questions?
Are you all, is the board full up, or are you still lacking one?
We are still lacking one.
And that's from Kiesa's district?
Largely the La Grange area.
How are they holding up with the advent of the fire season? Seems like it started off quite with a bang.
It's early and very busy. I think, Chief, correct me, one every day or two. A lot of them vegetation, but still very, it's gonna be a busy season.
I have no questions. I just want to wish you all luck and stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for scheduling me tonight. Appreciate it.
And thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Of course. Very much.
Hey, Item 1.2, strategic plan update.
And Mayor, members of the city council, I'm going to provide a brief overview of where we're at in our strategic plan. As you may recall, the city council met a couple of months ago in its semi-annual strategic planning session, and at that time, quite an ambitious agenda was set forth. Our agendas have been so full that we haven't actually done an overview since that time, and so, and the good part about that is that we've accomplished a number of things, as you'll see. The other part of that is we have a lot of work to do between now and our next session in October. Just as a reminder for all of us, that the city's mission statement is that we are committed to providing exceptional municipal services in a fiscally sound and professionally responsible manner for our community. The vision statement keeps us going. This is what we're working towards, is that the city of Riverbank will be recognized as a premier community where individuals and families and businesses thrive in a safe and beautiful environment. And our core values, we strive to do this in a way that represents professionalism, transparency, teamwork, respectful behavior, fiscal responsibility, integrity, and ethical behavior. And out of that comes our three-year goals. One is to enhance public safety, others to improve and maintain infrastructure and facilities, to enhance professionalism and customer service, to achieve and maintain financial stability and sustainability, and retain and attract businesses. And then as the city council is well aware, we set forth goals in each of these areas. And the first one, the first area that we set goals in was the enhanced public safety, and one is to implement a gang awareness prevention program in Riverbank, and that there have been three public presentations on that, two have been, excuse me, three public presentations have been planned and two have been completed. One was just last week, and so that's very positive. Also too, the chief is working on providing bilingual presentations in regards to nextdoor.com. Also had an opportunity to talk to the chief about Facebook and the popularity of the Sheriff's Department's Facebook page, and how that is really becoming a way for people to be known, including those that commit crimes. And the chief was very polite, just really was speaking how valuable it was to, it makes the community smaller, and that when an individual posts, does something illegal and it's posted on Facebook, that somebody recognizes them. It's really an amazing tool. So we're happy to see that, that both of the Sheriff's Department's social media efforts paying off. The Junior Police Academy is scheduled for July 27th to the 31st of this year, and so this is an opportunity to expose youth to law enforcement services and help grow them in Stanislaus County and hopefully serve as our sheriff's deputies in the future. We also are continuing to work with the county on the county disaster preparedness plan, and then that will lead into the city, an update of the city's plan later this year. In terms of improving and maintaining infrastructure and facilities, there's been a lot of discussion about a number of these things over the course of the last six months. The next few are in regards to some major facility improvements. One is to consider a consultant to prepare conceptual design and cost estimates for Phase Two and Three for the sports complex. We've already done that for the pool and the community center, and the next stage is the sports complex. We do need to postpone that. I think you understand recreation has been with basically two full-time staff members for recreation, been working very hard on Cheese and Wine and the youth programs, which have been very well received. So we are asking for additional time to prepare that conceptual design and get a consultant there. The next item has been completed, and that is the update of the Stormwater Management and Control Ordinance. The next item is in regards to the smart water meters and getting financing for the installation of new water meters that will be very helpful in this drought that we are experiencing to such a drastic degree. These meters, once implemented, will be able to, be able to more carefully monitor water use, both as individuals and then also monitoring as a city, to be able to see where we have leaks, where we need to conserve, and where there are areas that are excessive use. This is a project that's been discussed by the city council. We're still working on the financing, and we'll be coming back to you in September. As I mentioned, Pool Locker Room, the conceptual designs have been done. We are in the, trying to find financing options for this, as well as the community center. We'll be providing an update on this in August. The dilemma is the funding options are not, not, they're not there. They're just not there. I'm trying to find a better way of saying that, but it's just, they're, they're not readily available is probably a better way of putting it, but it is, it is very difficult to find funding for projects of this kind and of this magnitude. In addition to that, it is the Phase Two and Phase Three of Jacob Myers Park. So a lot of planning has been done, and now it's, how do we, how do we fund some of these actual improvements? Another area in improving infrastructure and facilities has to do with our wastewater treatment plant and looking for opportunities to expand services related to the wastewater treatment plant. Right now, the state funding that is available is only available for those projects that are for bringing wastewater treatment plants up to code and to deal with issues. The good news is, we're not eligible for that money because our system is meeting all state requirements and is operating well. So we're hoping that as they deal with some of the critical issues, more funding will become available. We also, as Item Number Eight is to modify the storm drain master plan to meet the new state standards and present to the city council for consideration. This is contingent upon funding, and it was established in the goal, it was contingent upon funding, so we'll need to evaluate whether or not that's something that needs to become a future objective based on where we're at in our budget and where we're at with this water and sewer rate studies. Also too, we need to identify funding for a parks and recreation master plan and present that opportunity to the city council. So you've kind of noticed the theme here, there's a lot of things on our to-do list, and the dilemma is finding the budget resources to actually do them. And then again, another, another item is to actually fund and to proceed with a parks and recreation master plan, so clearly we need to identify a funding source. At this point, I think the most likely funding source will be through development fees, so as new development comes to the city of Riverbank and they pay their park development fees, that a portion of that has been designated for the development of a parks and recreation master plan for our community. In terms of professionalism and customer service, this is an area that always, that always can be improved upon. Right now, this week, we are really focused on the new website, which will be launched later this week, and we are already doing training sessions, and we are, we're getting ready to go live beginning tomorrow, so there will be a little bit of a transition. This is a bit of a warning, but it is, for anybody who hasn't been to our website, who doesn't go there every day, they will see the new website probably as early as Thursday. For those that see our site regularly, it may take another extra day for their internet browser to recognize the new site rather than going from their previous records. Also too, really pleased to let you know that the staff had an event held on May 1st, 2015. It was a picnic for employees and their families, and this was organized by the organizational culture team that I've put together to be able to help improve teamwork and improve morale and to help build those communication lines and teamwork that we so desperately need to be able to continue to improve our performance and serve our community better. The organizational culture team did a great job in organizing this. This is something they wanted to do for their colleagues, and it was just a great event at Jacob Myers Park, and very, very positive, and my hat goes off to Maricela Garcia and Katie Lemmons, who is, who are leading the organizational culture team, and the members of the staff who are actively participating. In addition to that, we're going to be providing a more thorough update for the city council on that in August, and so you'll be hearing directly from Katie and Maricela and possibly members of the team on terms of how that's going. And the other area that we'll be working on over the course of the summer is going to be doing some customer service training. This is an internal staff activity. We are not at this point planning to hire a consultant to do this. The dilemma is that we have a part-time HR manager, and we've been clearly working on labor agreements, the website, and other matters, so some of this is, we're going to try and get as much of this done as possible for the next strategic planning session, but it is something that's very heavy on, on the minds of myself and Katie Lemmons. In terms of maintaining financial stability and sustainability, this is a perfect night to be talking about that, as Maricela will be presenting the proposed budget for 2015, 2016, and we'll be, also be presenting the final budget for the local redevelopment authority. So part of that though is a discussion in regards to the potential water and sewer rate changes that the city council has considered, and we have scheduled that public hearing for August 25th. In addition to that, we have recently completed the labor agreements with the city's employee groups, and then on, we've also are in the process of working on the follow-up to the approval of the Nexus Fee Study that sets forth development fees, to be able to revise the ordinance for how to implement that and how to deal with situations that come up as development fees are applied. A couple of things that will be dependent upon other agencies and private investment, one is to negotiate the development of a community facilities district to provide funding for services such as roads, landscaping, and even potentially police services, and this is for all new development. This would be something that we'll go through the development process and we'll be working with as each new development comes forward. Again though, it is dependent upon private development, and we are, we are hoping that that will, that will continue to be, be happening in our community in the coming years. The other area that is sort of an ongoing challenge is to identify funding sources for downtown revitalization, our parks and infrastructure improvements, and to make recommendations to the city council for how to fund some of these items. As I mentioned earlier, the dilemma is finding these resources. Just as a side note, in terms of the downtown revitalization, I was in a meeting with a number of city managers from across the state on Thursday, and the issue of downtown revitalization came up, and we are all struggling. Big cities, small cities are struggling with finding resources for downtown revitalization since the dissolution of the California redevelopment law. And so California redevelopment law was the one tool that we had to help make investments and prompt investment in areas that the private sector just was not willing to do. The risks were too big, and until the risks are minimized for private sector investment, we have nothing to, we really don't have much to incentivize. What we can do is do everything we can that when they are prepared, that we're ready for them, and that we can welcome them, and that our processes can be as streamlined as possible to help them be successful in terms of the, of getting their businesses open. But until there is that, that opportunity where people are willing to risk their funds to, to start a business or to expand a business, we just, we need to use the opportunity to be prepared. And so we're hoping that we're getting to the point in the economy where people are going to be wanting to make that type of investment. On Item Number Six is determine the feasibility of a citywide stormwater utility district and make a recommendation to the city council. The whole stormwater discussion has been something that we've been talking a lot about over the course of the last few months, and we're going to be talking more about it later this evening, and this is something that, the next phase, again, common theme is, we are required by the state to implement significant improvements in our stormwater management system. These are requirements that are an unfunded mandate by the state of California that are connected to federal law. We have no choice, just like we have no choice about letting the lawns go brown in the medians of downtown, we have no choice. We must do this. We must fund it. And the challenge is, there's absolutely no money to fund it in our general fund. We're going to have to look for outside funding sources, hopefully through the state and grants, but we're also going to need to find an ongoing funding source, and that is something that will be, be, something that we'll need to be looking at in the, in the fall. The areas, so in light of these funding needs, one of the things that we can do is look at what are our opportunities, and this city has more opportunities than most. And one of those areas is a possible annexation to the east side, east of the industrial complex. The industrial complex has been doing quite well. It is full, there's, it is hitting a market need, and there's an opportunity to expand to the east to make the most of that area for industrial growth in the city of Riverbank. This is something that the mayor and the city council discussed at in the last two strategic planning sessions, and so we're planning to move forward with that. It will also allow the city to make the most of the potential North County corridor and to be able to get an urban interchange at Eleanor and the new North County corridor, which will help ensure that we have good circulation through the city of Riverbank and the industrial complex from the North County corridor. In addition to that, we have opportunities to the west side of Riverbank, and that is for a potential expansion to the west, an expansion of crossroads, a potential commercial development that would enhance what is already there at crossroads, at our existing crossroad shopping center, and potentially additional housing as well that would support the additional retail. And so those are very positive signs that would increase revenue for the city and be development that would pay development fees to help go into some of this long-term master planning. Terms of retaining and attracting business, the downtown specific plan was approved by the city council in April, and very pleased that that was completed. In addition to that, I did receive word that there have been no, no issues of legal action against that, and so it is, at this point in the game, the environmental document as well as the downtown specific plan is basically in force and can be applied. Item Number Two is to conduct a business support workshop with current and potential businesses. The idea behind this was to help those businesses who, who might be ready to expand, who are working out of garages or out of their home offices, that if, if they, when they're ready to put forth that risk to get a downtown presence, or to get office space, or to get industrial space, is how can we help them get the tools they need to be able to be better positioned to make that investment? And so we're going to be working with the Alliance to do that. We do need some additional time, but one of the areas that the Alliance has been successful in is in the innovation challenges, and I think you've seen advertised and talked about in the Modesto Bee, and Riverbank businesses have done quite well with that. And so one is actually going to take place in the city of Riverbank at the teen center in September, and so we're hoping to be able to pull more Riverbank people out into that, and we're looking forward to seeing that occur in, right in our own city. Item Number Three is to continue to work on the retention and attraction marketing for, to be able to be better prepared to respond to, to any businesses that might be looking for space that we have available in Riverbank. Right now, the big challenge is we don't have a lot of, of project-ready land available, and so we're not in a position of a city that we don't own a lot of land, and so it's a little bit different, different animal. But this is something that the executive director of the LRA has taken on and is wants to be, to be as well-positioned as possible, so we have that information. We've done some draft work on that, we have draft items, and we're just continuing to refine that. The other thing that has been very well-received is the mayor and myself and a member of the staff have been visiting businesses over the course of the last couple of years or, and/or having some business events. We haven't done as much of that this last spring and early summer, so we're planning to do more of that in the next, in the next three months, to be able to go visit new, new businesses on a more formal basis. Now, we have done some informal businesses, informal business visits, but to actually schedule an appointment and sit down and talk to them and really get some, some focus feedback on, on what's going well for them, what's, what needs improvement, what do they see in the economy, that type of thing. So we're looking forward to doing more of that in the coming months. In addition to that, we are working on an incentive to encourage new restaurants in downtown, and we'll be presenting that to the city council in September to get some feedback and to see if there's a way to do that within our current budget resources or if there is a need to dedicate new resources to that particular purpose. It is, our economic development consultant and common, common knowledge, common assumptions are that a restaurant will bring people, a restaurant will encourage more activity, and so we believe that it would be, that that would be very important for our downtown to help kick off new investment is a restaurant in our, in our city. So we're hoping to be able to get an incentive that would be significant enough to make the difference for somebody to, to come here. And then we'll also be continuing in the future, building on some of the things that we're already done, is to be working on developing the retention and marketing packages and also doing, doing some marketing and branding research. The next session, as I mentioned, is October 15th, 2015. That's a Thursday. It is open to the public. We generally start at 8:30 in the morning. Public comment is at the beginning of that session, and it is, it always proves to be a great opportunity to identify what we're doing well, where we need improvement, where we want to go, and outline a plan to get there. I compliment the city council for your engagement in this and your willingness to invest significant chunks of time to that process, and I look forward to bringing you another report in approximately, most likely the middle of August. So, thank you. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Questions, comments? I have a couple. You complimented the city council, I want to compliment them too, on their foresight and their endurance. We've had independent developer come on in and speak with the city manager, myself, and the planning staff, and was surprised how many areas we have that are ready for movement. You know, we have the downtown specific plan, we have industrial complex with the North County corridor, we have the west side, we have the housing development starting on the east side, so we're moving. We have a lot of areas where, where we can capitalize on, and we've all taken that, that vision and said, this is where we have to go and concentrate, and that's why our strategic plan is not one that is just lip service. There's a lot that just say, oh well, we did strategic planning and we're good for the next six years. We're good for the next six months because things are moving, and so we continue to develop it. For the infrastructure and, you know, your objective three for the water meters, did you get a briefing, or you get a briefing from the water you get a briefing, or you get a briefing from the Water Resource Board on monies available? For a project just like the, the water meters, they have $20 million that they'll give you free of interest. So, if we're looking for money, the Water Resource Board will give 20 million, up to 20 million, I don't know how much it's going to cost, but if it costs 40 million, hey, let's do 20 million at first. That's better than paying 2%, 3%, 4% on it. And I can't remember the city. I, I've read it briefly, but there was one from HUD that gave a city $20 million to improve their parks, their bike and, and walking paths, and I want to say with Minneapolis. Now, they're big, they probably have more pool, but we don't need 20 million, we only need two. But as HUD is giving out money for urban development, and if we want to take a look at what they have available, say, hey, downtown specific plan, let's start that urban development. And I'm, if we're looking for someone to, to look at it for us, I would concentrate in those areas. If you have anything doing with VA, with a veteran, VA has money they can't give away. So, I don't want to start saying, okay, we need to develop the downtown, you know, to start attracting, we already have attractions that we don't need to have certain people in town, but veterans are okay, I, I hear it. So, there, there appears to be some funding available, it's just how do we get to them? And I'm, again, I'm going to name drop. The president and his secretaries, when I was at the White House, said they preferred to deal directly with cities because there's the only level of government that are getting things done. So, let's deal directly with the federal government if we can, and, and call them on the bluff. For the North County corridor, prior to our next strategic planning, we may have to come together and make a, a decision on what we want with the North County corridor. And I'd like the staff to take a look at combining our resolution to accept whatever we want to do with the North County corridor with that of Oakdale, and combining those two together will make a very positive, strong statement to where this city is going as well as a city just down the road. So, those are just things observed, and, and I know we have talked about that, I just want to make sure that I haven't forgotten them, you know, my memory. Any other comments, questions? What were the briefings that you guys got up there at the league?
Mine for the community, they, the California League of Cities just wanted to get a, like a wish list for our parks and recs, projects that we needed funding for, and so we need to send that out.
Okay, we could do that, but I still look at urban development or some, you know.
And mine for the employees relation board, they're focusing a lot on changing payers and pensions and looking at that, plus they're still looking for a lot of money for redevelopment.
Okay, all right. So, we all had different briefings, so we all bring something back to the table. Okay. Thank you, Jill, on that. Public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any items not appearing on the agenda and within the subject commander's jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city council. Is there any public comment tonight? So, you know, let's move on to the consent calendar, consisting of item 3A, waiver readings. Item 3B, approval of the June 9th, 2015, city council LRA authority minutes. Item 3C, a resolution of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, confirming the waiver and/or reduction of the required system development fees for the Galaxy Theater LLC. Item 3D, a resolution of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, approving the cost of living adjustment, a sick leave cash-out provision, and a vacation cash-out provision for the department directors and the city manager. Is there anyone wishing from the council to pull any of these items? Is there anyone from the public wishing to pull any of the consent items? So, now, I bring it back to the city council for further discussion and/or recommendation.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar and a second.
Council authority member Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Unfinished business, item 4-1, second reading by title only and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2015-011 of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, amending Title IX General Regulations, amending section, chapter 91, Animal and Chapter 94 Park Regulations of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Mayor, members of the city council, a complete staff report was given to this, excuse me, on this item at the last meeting, and so, at this time, we're recommending that the city council conduct the second reading by title only and adopt the proposed ordinance by roll call vote.
Are there any comments or questions on item 4-1 from the council? Are there any comments or questions from the public? So, now, I bring it back to the city council for recommendation.
I make a motion that we approve item 4.1.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 4.1.
Council members Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 4.2, second reading by title only and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2015-012 of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, amending Title V, Public Works by repealing in its entirety, Chapter 5353, Stormwater Management, and discharging control of, and substituting in its place, a new Chapter 53 of the City of Riverbank Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Mayor, members of the city council, as, as I just spoke about, the city has been dealing a lot with the new stormwater requirements that have been established by the state in compliance with federal law. This is one of the actions that the city has taken to be able to bring our standards up into compliance, and the complete staff report was given at the last city council meeting to show some of the updates and how the city is, intends to meet the new requirements for stormwater management. And so, at this time, it is recommended that the city council conduct the second reading by title only and consider adoption of the ordinance by roll call vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions on item 4-1? From the public, are there any questions or comments on item 4.1, correction, 4.2? I got it. So, now, on 4.2, I bring it back to the council for recommendation.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we adopt in item 4.2.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item 4.2 and a second.
Council members Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Public hearings, 5-1, Consolidated Landscape and Lighting District. A resolution of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, amending and/or approving the engineer's report for the Riverbank Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District and a levy and collection of annual assessment related to, related thereto for fiscal year 2015-16. And two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the Riverbank Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2015 and 16.
Mayor, members of the city council, this is the annual discussion on the city's landscape and lighting in storm drain districts. This is a, a funding source that needs to be established. There is a general staff report on the, on all of the, on all of the, the districts to provide an overview of what they do and what the impact is. There is a conflict on one of them, the crossroads one, for four of you, in which we need to identify who will be sitting at the dais, and Annabelle has her process for there. I'd like to ask the city attorney whether or not the, the entire city council can listen to the, the general staff report to confirm that, and if you'd like, would you like to, at this point, pull the coins for who will, who will be sitting for the crossroads vote?
Are we not taking each one individually?
We will be, but we're giving a general staff report to begin with.
I got you. Yeah, let's do the polling on who's going to stay, we'll listen to it, and then, after that, before we even discuss item 5.2, they'll leave the dais.
Great, thank you.
Actually, we did that the last time this came up, so we'll continue with that, those members, continue to participate.
The same one.
And not, yes.
Oh, okay. So, not to her. So, does city clerk remember who sat at the dais at the last city council meeting?
That was council member Campbell and Mayor O'Brien and Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
But then, at this point, council member Jones Cruz and council member Tucker get a, we'll get a little break when we address item five, excuse me, item 5.2. So, you get, you get to stay for a little while, you get to stay for the staff report.
And we've had a lot of this already, so it is a short staff report?
Yes, it is a short staff report.
And Kathleen Kleek will be presenting the brief staff report.
Thank you, Jackson. Thank you, Jacob. All right, you can go too at this time. I'm sorry.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. It's that time again to review the landscape and lighting districts and new budgets for fiscal year 15-16. So, tonight is recommended that council consider amending and/or approving the fiscal year 15-16 engineer's reports and order the levy and collection of annual assessments for the five landscape and lighting districts and the two storm drain districts. So, overview, the five landscape and lighting districts were formed pursuant to Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. Annual assessments cover the cost of landscape maintenance, street lighting, and capital improvements. District budgets are reviewed annually. The storm drain district, we have two pursuant to the Benefit Assessment Act of 1982. Annual assessments cover maintenance and operations of the storm drain facilities and improvements within the district, and these budgets are reviewed annually also. So, the highlights for this year, there'll be no assessment increases to the landscape and lighting districts, a slight decrease to crossroads landscape and lighting district benefit zone, and also zone four. Two other highlights I wanted to point out, capital improvements that'll need to be made is at the crossroads district zone, on Crawford Road, we have some ash trees that are beginning to pull up our curb and gutter, damaging sidewalk, damaging irrigation, and unfortunately, from Oakdale Road to Squire Wells, they're going to need to be removed. So, in removing those, we will be looking, and we have been looking at some drought-tolerant landscaping to take that, the place. What we're going to do is notify the residents of, everyone at Crossroads, since they pay into this district, we want them to, to know what's going on, what we're doing, kind of get some feedback on a few different designs, and then go from there. So, just wanted to point that out to everybody. The trees are beautiful, but they were the wrong trees to plant in that little strip, and unfortunately, along with a lot of other cities, they're finding that they're beginning to pull up the sidewalks and the curb and gutter, and we want to address it now before it causes even more damage.
The tree removal is landscape and lighting, but there's, the repairs are through streets.
Repairs of the streets would be, would have to come out of your gas tax, right? So, we want to prevent that from happening, so we need to make sure we get it taken care of before that. The second item that we're going to be doing is around, along Oakdale Road, we have median landscaping, and then we have landscaping along the wall and the narrow planter by the sidewalk. We're going to be replacing the irrigation there, a lot of it, we're, we're having a lot of phone calls. What's happening is as the vegetation is growing, the sprayers that are out there are hitting the vegetation, and it's out in the street. So, we're watering our street as opposed to watering our median. And with the drought, we are looking at putting in the rainbird tech line, which is a line that we can put in, and it will minimal water savings for just morel along the wall and the narrow planter. The savings is about 13,000 gallons a week, and then the median is about 53,200 gallons. So, big savings. So, we will be putting those in. Ridgewood Place, there's, like I said, there's no change to this assessment, it's going to stay at $80. Consolidated, we have the six different districts within the consolidated, and those will all be staying the same. River Cove, the assessment there will stay the same as well. Sierra Vista Estates, that will also stay the same. Sterling Ridge Storm Drain District, we will not have any increases to that district or to the Heartland Storm Drain Maintenance District. So, tonight, it's recommended that the city council approve for fiscal year 15-16 engineer's reports and order of levy and collection of the annual assessments for, well, actually, right now, for the four landscape and lighting districts and the two storm drain districts I shared. So, is there any questions?
No question, just a comment, I'm glad to see that the improvements that we're going to make along Oakdale Road will help us to save water because that, we're going in the right direction there, and glad to see we're being proactive in taking care of the ash trees before we have any problems with the streets. Thank you.
We're going to do 5-1, then you're going to leave.
Oh, okay.
Don't get too anxious.
Not, I just don't want to stay too long. Overstayed my welcome.
This is a public hearing, are there any comments from the public? So, no comments from the public, I bring it back to this, or to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion that we approve item 5.1.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve item 5.1 and a second.
Council members Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Now, you may leave. Thank you very much. Item 5.2, Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting District. A resolution of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, amending and/or approving the engineer's report for Riverbank Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting District and the levy and collection of annual assessment, assessments related thereto for fiscal year 2015 and 16. Part two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the Riverbank Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2015 and 2016. Let's go for the public hearing? Okay. This is a public hearing, are there any public comments on item 5.2? So, now, I bring this back to the council for recommendation.
Make a motion that we approve item 5.2.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 5.2.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Item 5.3, Ridgewood Place Landscape and Lighting District. One, a resolution of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, amending and/or approving the engineer's report for Riverbank Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting One, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending and/or approving the engineers' report for the Ridgewood Place Landscaping and Lighting District and the levy and collection of annual assessments related thereto for fiscal year 2015 and 16. Two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the Ridgewood Place Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2015-16. This is a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public on item 5.3? Seeing no public comments, I bring this back to this council for consideration.
Make a motion, we approve item 5.3.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 5.3.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones-Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.4, Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District. One, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending and/or approving the engineers' report for Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District and the levy and collection of annual assessments related thereto for fiscal year 2015 and 16. Two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2015 and 2016. This is a public hearing. Is there any comments from the public on item 5.4? Seeing none, I bring this back to the council for consideration.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept item 5.4.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item 5.4 and a second.
Members Campbell?
Yes.
Jones-Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.5, River Cove Landscaping and Lighting District. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending and/or approving the engineers' report for the Landscaping and Lighting District, number one, River Cove subdivision, and levy and, the end collection of the annual assessments related thereto for the fiscal year 2015-16. Two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, ordering the levy and collection of the annual assessments for the Landscaping and Lighting District, number one, River Cove subdivision, for fiscal year 2015-16. This is a public hearing. Do we have any comments on item 5.5, River Cove Landscaping and Lighting District? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I make a motion, we accept item 5.4.
I second.
5.5, I mean.
I, I second.
5.5. We have a motion to approve 5.5, River Cove Landscaping and Lighting District, and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones-Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.6, Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District, number 2006-01 Heartlands. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District, number 2006-01 Heartlands, for fiscal year 2015 and 16. This is a, this is a public hearing. Is there any comments on item 5.6, Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District? Seeing none, I bring it back to this council for consideration.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 5.6.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 5.6.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones-Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.7, Sterling Ridge B-A-D Bravo Alpha Delta Storm Drain Maintenance District, one. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Riverbank Storm Drain District, number 05-01 Sterling Ridge Benefit Assessment District for fiscal year 2015-16. This is a public hearing. Is there any comments on item 5.7? Seeing none, I bring this back for consideration to, on the council.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 5.7.
I second.
We have a motion to approve item 5.7 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones-Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.8, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, adopting the fiscal year 2015-16 annual operating budget.
Mayor, members of the city council, this item has been scheduled to ask the city council to take action on the proposed budget for FY, excuse me, fiscal year 15-16. There was a in-depth workshop covering the budget earlier this month, and since that time, we've prepared a final proposed budget for your consideration this evening. Our finance director, Maricela Garcia, will provide an overview of the budget, the general fund, as well as some of the, the other enterprise funds. So, at this time, I'd like to ask our director of finance to present the report, as she does so well each and every year.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we're pleased, after many months of hard work, to present to you the fiscal year 2015-2016 annual operating budget. Just to give you a brief overview of the presentation, we'll go over the general fund. We'll also go over our special revenue funds, our system development fee funds, housing funds, sewer enterprise, and water enterprise. So, tonight's presentation's gonna give you sort of the large overview of the city's entire operating budget versus the budget workshop where we focused on the general fund and gave you the specific details at that point in time. The general fund, this is the status that we're projecting as of the end of the 2015-16 fiscal year. So, we're projected to begin our fiscal year with a reserve of about 9.9% or $857,000. We're looking at revenues of about 8.4% and expenditures of about 8.6% with an ending reserve of 7.5% or $635,000. Our required 10% reserve, as established by the city council, is at $843,000. So, you'll notice, there's two shortfalls we have. The first being to our reserve, which is $208,000, and then we actually are projecting a structural deficit of $222,000. Now, this structural deficit, although it seems high, I did wanna highlight that it does include about $148,000 in one-time funding for two major projects. The first being the Economic Development Bank loan at $125,000. This is the final payment that will be made to the county. I will be happy on July 1st to write them a check so that that will come off of our books. The second is a proposal that we presented to the city council during the budget workshop for updated finance software within the finance department. So, that cost is $23,500. And so, combined, those two make up the $148,000 that are one-time cost. And so, in actuality, we would be looking at about $77,000 of ongoing costs that actually reflect our structural deficit. General fund revenues for the upcoming fiscal year are anticipated to decrease at 2.4%. Here are some of our major revenue sources and the changes that we're projecting there. For sales tax, we're looking at about a 1.8% increase. We know we do have some development going on in our crossroad shopping center. Some of those will be food-related businesses. Some of them will be more commercial and retail-in type. And so, we're hoping that those will be able to bring in some additional revenues to the city. Property tax current secured, currently, we're projecting 5% increase. The county assessor's office has not yet released its roll press, and so, we have not yet projected any additional increase over this 5% based on their analysis. Property tax in lieu of VLF, which is a, also tied to property assessments and values, is also projected at 5% for that same reason. And then, we also have the transfer in of management fee, which is going up about 11.4%. So, this is the fee that we charge to other funds to offset salaries for staff who are charged in the general fund and that actually do work within water or sewer or gas tax. So, those funds do directly reimburse the general fund anytime any work is done within those different enterprise funds and special revenue funds. So, if you'll notice, these top four revenue sources produce about 18% of the city's revenues. It's a little bit scary to have such a top-heavy revenue source where only four of the, the revenue sources provide the city's revenues. And so, if you'll notice, they're all extremely volatile. They all depend heavily on what the market is doing. And so, it's incumbent upon myself and upon the city to look for financing sources that are not so volatile and that will be able to sustain us in the future.
Before you move on, it just occurred to me, you said that this is unusual, that these are the top-heavy. What is usual for cities our size?
Some other cities do have other financing sources, such as utility users' tax that they depend on. Ours really is these three financing sources.
We don't have a utility?
Correct. We don't have those.
Until we develop a stormwater district.
Correct. Nor do we have a mill tax or a business license tax that's based on gross receipts, which is, a lot of cities have gone that route. General fund expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year are only projected to go up a little bit over half a percent, so really not a very significant increase. And as I mentioned during the budget workshop, although we're only looking at about a $52,000 difference between this current fiscal year and the new fiscal year coming up, in reality, costs have gone up about $300,000. And that includes both the increase in the sheriff's contract and increases in personnel salaries and benefits. Some of the highlights of the items that we've included within the general fund, as I mentioned, the Stanislaus County Economic Development Bank loan with the final repayment of $124,900. The city manager's merit and COLA increase at $21,500. Finance software upgrade of $23,500. And the sheriff's contract has increased about $71,000. There are two personnel requests that have been included within the general fund. The first is the transition of our part-time personnel manager to a full-time position. This added approximately $40,000 to our current budget in order to make that position full-time. And so, this really was mainly in the benefit area. This new employee would be eligible for increases in CalPERS, as well as health benefit insurance, health insurance benefits. The second cost that we've included is the reclassification of a construction inspector I to a construction inspector II. Our construction inspector currently is working out of his job classification and has been doing duties that a construction inspector II normally performs. And so, we are requesting that these two positions, the first position be made a full-time position and that the second be a reclassification of a current employee.
In regards to the personnel manager position, that position was previously approved in a, on a budget and the job classification was, was not, not approved. However, the person currently filling the position did go through a full recruitment process and interview process and selection process. And so, that person is Katie Lemmons, and then she will be transitioning to full-time for the remainder of the year. And then, we anticipate Katie's retirement to happen in January of 2016 and going out for recruitment in, in the fall of 2015 to be able to fill that position and to have a transition period. And so, I do wanna clarify that there will not be a new employee immediately and that that person has already gone, the current person filling the part-time role has already gone through the, the selection, the formal selection process. And we are, I am, I am recommending these two personnel reclassifications for, that they are, they are strategic for us being able to continue to operate. It was a, in terms of evaluating the different options for, for these positions, it is particularly difficult when the budget is, is so tight that, to recommend full-time positions. However, moving forward and being able to make the most of the opportunities that we have and to operate in a sound and professional manner, a full-time human resource manager really is critical to the city's ongoing operation.
As we move forward in the fiscal year, there are some outstanding items that we will need to keep in mind. We will be presenting quarterly updates to the city council. We will have more information on several of these items during those quarterly updates and perhaps even before that for those that require immediate attention by the council. So, some of these items to consider are potential legal settlements that are associated with open matters, such as the skate park. That is still currently in litigation, and we hope that the upcoming fiscal year will bring us news of the closure of this matter. Future impacts of the state budget and state mandates, district elections, necessary full-time positions in both recreation and development services, outdated communication system here at the City of Riverbank, stormwater management requirements, park master plan, some additional planning and engineering funds for special projects, such as the sphere of influence expansion, the Eastside Industrial Master Plan and annexation, and the North County Corridor. Seventh Street storm line repairs, some initial costs have been received by staff and will be presented to the city council at a, a near date, and a non-motorized transportation plan for the city. Currently, we rely on Stan Cog's non-motorized plan in order to, to make any adjustments to the city's. And so, those are my highlights for the general fund. Special revenue funds, these are funds that are legally restricted to be spent on specific areas or projects. For example, our gas tax funds, our storm drain funds, we have a vehicle tow fund where we collect $50 off of every vehicle release. That's specifically going towards traffic enforcement. Our workers' comp liability fund and our Quimby Park funds that come through park development fees that are charged. Some of the major projects that we're anticipating from our special revenue funds include the ongoing allocation for ADA accessibility, corporation yard fencing, which was a project that was discussed during the budget workshop and that was recommended for inclusion in this fiscal year budget. General fund liability, we have funds that go towards general risk management areas, and that includes for both to avoid any workers' comp issues, as well as to help alleviate any issues that may come up in public areas that are maintained by the city, such as the parks, where we do provide monies towards the safe tree cut at Jacob Myers. So, all in all, for our special revenue funds, we're looking at an ending reserve of about $905,000 with the structural deficit of $97,000. I do caveat that some of these funds are designed to operate out of structural deficit because the monies will come in one time, one fiscal year, and then the monies will go out the next fiscal year when a project is slated to be begun. In addition, some of these revenues that come in are, are grants or state allocations that are not ongoing in, in nature. We also have system development fee funds that we allocate funds towards, and that's based on the NEXUS Fee Study that was presented to the city council. These are legally restricted to be spent on projects that are identified and approved within that system development fee program. The revenues are paid by new development, both residential and commercial. Several examples of the funds that we currently still have outstanding are bridges and roads, storm drain, police and general government, and we also have a crossroads undergrounding. Some of the major projects that are being anticipated in the 15-16 fiscal year include the project closeout of our Oakdale and Morel traffic signal. There's some final billings that are being prepared to the state in order for us to recoup some of the grant funds and the difference between what was- And the difference between what was received from the grant is actually paid out of system development fees. Clarabelle and Roselle Traffic Signal. We're hoping that an MOU will come soon from the county in order for us to proceed with that project. In storm drain, we have the Central Avenue Storm Drain Project. That project was actually slated to begin this fiscal year. We were, we've already awarded a contract and we were scheduled to begin in January. There's a little bird nesting out there that won't seem to fly away quite yet. So we're waiting for him to spread his wings and fly before we can start. Parks, we're also looking at the completion of Phase Two of Silva Park and we now have our project coordinator who has come back from medical leave and she has promised that it will be open by July 4th. So we, you're crossing our fingers that all of the work will be completed out at Silva Park. In terms of the system development fee activity as a whole, we're looking at ending reserves of about 4.9. So we're allocating about $694,000 this upcoming fiscal year towards all of those projects. And once again, these funds are designated to, are designed to have a structural deficit. Development comes in slowly. And so by the time we recoup enough revenues to do a project, it's most likely several fiscal years later. And so we do look at operating deficits when it comes to the allocation of those monies. Our housing funds, housing funds are dedicated solely to our first-time homebuyer and our housing rehabilitation loan program. We have a current outstanding loan portfolio of about $10 million. The loan repayments that are received go back into these funds so that they're recycled into the first-time homebuyer and housing rehab loan program. And we issue loans based on the guidelines that are adopted by the city council. And the loan terms are typically 30-year deferred loans for our first-time homebuyers. So we do give them an opportunity to pay off their first mortgage before they start to repay us. This past fiscal year, we've had a significant number of loans that were paid off. Because interest rates were so low, our homeowners were able to take advantage of refinancing their first loans, allowing them to cash out monies and be able to pay back the city. The downfall of that is that we're not able to tap into our grant funds because we're, we have to spend these funds first. And so for our housing funds, we're looking at estimated expenditures of $189,000. Most of that is in salaries. The grant funds that we have now will pay for any housing rehabilitation projects that we have, as well as any first-time homebuyer loans that we provide to our residents. And we do have two current open grants, our CDBG grant for $1 million and a Cal Home Grant for $500,000. And just the other day, we received word from home that we were awarded an additional $500,000 towards our housing rehabilitation and first-time homebuyer program. So we're very excited about that. And that takes us to sewer enterprise. Our sewer enterprise consists of not only our sewer operating fund, but also our debt service fund, our capital improvement funds, and the system development fee funds. So the majority of the revenues that are received operations-wise is from our city's customers, both, which includes our residential and our commercial and industrial. Then our system development fee funds come from new development. Some of the major projects that we have anticipated in the upcoming fiscal year, we always allocate funds towards any major emergency that may occur. We have the final completion of the Schneider Electric project at our wastewater treatment plant, which was from the loan proceeds that were obtained last year. And then we've also allocated funds towards this finance software upgrade. For the upcoming fiscal year, we do have debt service payments from our sewer enterprise of about $653,000. This goes towards our two sewer SRF loans, the loan obtained for the Schneider Electric project and an internal loan where the sewer fund borrowed monies in order to fund the expansion of the wastewater treatment plan. That particular loan will be repaid in about 2018 is the final repayment for that. For all of our sewer enterprise funds, we're looking at an allocation of approximately $4 million. And about $936,000 of that is allocated towards the completion of the Schneider Electric project. It's almost a million. I wanted to highlight the sewer operating fund. We still are projecting a structural deficit of $183,000. So that means our revenues coming in are not meeting our expenditures. And as the city manager mentioned during her strategic plan update, we do have the public hearing scheduled for August 25th, where we will consider revised rates for both water and sewer. Our residents should be receiving a notice sometime around July 10th that will give them all of the information necessary for them to be informed on the rate that are being proposed and then give them information on how they might protest if they so desire. Our water enterprise funds also consist of not only our operating fund, but also our capital improvement fund, our water connection fund, and the system development fee fund. Some of the major projects we're recommending is we do have funds allocated towards the water meter replacements. Our capital improvement fund had about $900,000 allocated towards this project. When we seek financing, we will seek financing for the majority of it and we may hold these amounts in reserve for any contingencies. We're hoping that there's no issues that arise, which will allow us to reallocate those monies towards other capital improvement projects that we've been wanting to work on. The capital improvement fund currently has funds allocated for any emergencies that may occur and our finance software upgrade as well. The water connection fund is where we have budgeted the monies for the water meter reading system. And so that's been rolling over for approximately three fiscal years now. So we're hoping that this upcoming fiscal year, we will be able to begin that project and bring it to completion. And we are currently investigating other funding sources so that we can reallocate those particular funds to other projects. For our water system development fees, we're also allocating monies towards the Central Avenue project in order to upgrade the water line that is there for future development. So in total, the water enterprise funds are allocating approximately $2.9 million in expenditures and we're looking at an ending reserve of 2.1. And as I mentioned, some of these, this reserve or this particular enterprise fund is also operating at a deficit, but we do have our system development fee funds that are one-time in nature, as well as our capital improvement funds that are one-time that are designed to work at a structural deficit. And so that brings me to the end of my presentation. And so tonight, we are recommending that the city council adopt a resolution which would approve the proposed 2015-16 fiscal year budget.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public on item 5.8, which is our current, our adoption of our budget? Seeing none, I bring it back to the city council. Before we proceed, there's a couple of items. One is the BIOLAC system, which you classified as Snyder. When do we start paying them? Because we have not yet accepted that project. We don't pay them until they're satisfied, we're satisfied, right?
So Schneider Electric has been billing us along the way. So we have paid them some funds, but we most likely will not pay them the retention until that project has been accepted by the city.
I mean, I need to talk about that. Okay, secondly, I just want to make a statement that our budget is very fragile. But I think we're all up here confident that there are, the risks that we're taking are worthwhile and that we'll come through with very little difficulties. But I want to thank you for the way that you have presented and the way that you give your estimates.
Thank you.
Okay, on item 5.8, do I have a comments or recommendations from the city council?
I'll approve, I mean, I'll make a motion that we approve item 5.8.
So you move to approve?
Yes.
I will second.
That's what I said.
We have a motion to approve item 5.8, which is the city budget for 1516, and a second.
Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
LRA item 5.9, a resolution of the Local Redevelopment Authority Board of the City of Riverbank, California, approving the budget for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Mayor, members of the city council, or should I say chair, members of the Board of Directors for the Local Redevelopment Authority. This is a budget that was discussed in detail at the June 9th city council meeting. And this evening, we are presenting an overview. However, due to an individual being out on leave and the executive director being at a board of directors meeting for the Association of Defense Communities, we needed to go, we needed to go back to the past and bring in somebody that we have, all have great respect for and that is Pam Carter, who is filling in for Debbie this evening. And so Pam Carter served on a part-time basis for the Local Redevelopment Authority, but she also served as interim city manager for the city for approximately a year. So it is always a pleasure to have Pam be with us. And so this evening, I'd ask her to provide a brief overview of the budget and be asking for your approval this evening. So Pam, welcome, welcome back to city council chambers.
You've gotten a new podium since I was here. Okay, this evening, we are going to be talking about the Riverbank Local Redevelopment Authority budget. There are some assumptions that we used in figuring this out. First of all, it assumes the completion of ESCA 1 by the time the fiscal year ends. It is done. All of the bills have now been submitted. We have not quite received the last payment on it, but everything is complete on that. So revenues for this coming year will be down because that's finished, as will expenditures. We do anticipate executing ESCA number two, which is to take down the siding and roofing that has the Galbestis on it and replace it. This is going to result in a reduction in OEA funding. Rents will remain stable, but we're not going to rent any more space out until that's done. And we will need grant match money in order to replace the siding. Once the ESCA two is executed, then we expect the MOA memorandum of agreement to be executed, which is the deal for transferring the site to the city. When this happens, we'll lose the caretaker revenue. And once, under that MOA, some of the land transfers to the city, we will have to pay for permits, fees, and assessments on the property. Finally, this assumes that we are going to receive the insurance claim payment of $110,000 that was approved by the council, that we anticipated receiving before the end of this year. And what I'm presenting to you tonight assumes that that's received by the end of this fiscal year. If it's not, it'll have to be shown in a mid-year budget adjustment for next year. Doesn't change the bottom-line number, it just would be credited during a different fiscal year. The overview of the budget is that we have a beginning reserve, which we did include that $110,000 in, of $950,618. Estimated revenues are a little over 3.2 million. Estimated expenditures are about 2.4 million, which will leave us with a nice reserve of about 68% of almost 1.7 million. We've been trying to build up that reserve because that's how we're going to help pay for the match for the grants in order to replace the siding out there. So this has been a deliberate effort on the part of the LRA. Our revenue comes from two sources. First of all, we get it from onsite. Those are largely the tenants, sale of personal property, utility revenue, caretaker revenue, et cetera. This year, we received, we anticipate we're going to receive about $2.5 million. We anticipate that next year, it'll be about $2.8 million. So we'll get an increase of about 14% in our revenues from the site itself. The expenditures that we expend that on are going to be dropping by about 15%. It was about 2.4 million this year. Next year, we think it'll be about 2.1. The other source of funds is from grant revenue. And this is from the ESCA one and the Office of Economic Adjustment, OEA. This year, we received about $1.3 million. And next year, largely because of the ESCA, but a little bit because of OEA reduction in grant, we'll receive about $364,000, change of 72%. The ESCA provided us with quite a bit of revenue this last year, but there were also a lot of expenses going with that. The grant expenditure overview goes from that $1.3 million down to $392,000. So again, a major reduction largely because of the ESCA. Just to recap, this is exactly like the first one. We anticipate that at the end of this year, we're going to have almost $1.7 million in revenues. Our overall, our revenues went down from all sources by about 14%. The revenues went down as a result, or the expenditures went down considerably more than that. We have $600,000 less in revenues, but almost $1.5 million less in expenditures this year. Were there any questions? I think Debbie had one more. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public on item, LRA item 5.9, which is the LRA budget? Seeing none, I bring it back to this board for comments or action.
I make a motion that we approve item 5.9.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve LRA item 5.9 and a second.
Assembly members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbara Martinez, Chair O'Brien.
Be vice chair tonight, yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item 6.1 on the new business. Thank you, Pam. Consideration of a request to file a fireworks application after the deadline established by the Riverbank Municipal Code.
Mayor, members of the city council, this item was placed on the agenda at the request of the mayor in regards to a situation that was basically some miscommunication. The first week of June, I became aware of the fact that Community Praise Tabernacle had expected to get a fireworks permit. However, they had not filed the appropriate business license permit. I'd received a comment from Consolidated Fire District that they had indeed filed all their work with Consolidated, but there had been a miscommunication. And at that point, oh, I apologize, yes, so Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez is recusing herself.
I'm sorry, yes, I had that on my notes. Sorry.
And for the public to know, Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez has her community service group, has received a fireworks application. And because she is the executive director of that community group, she is recusing herself for any potential conflict of interest that she might have in regards to this matter. So, so this fireworks application, basically what we determined was that the group, Community Praise Tabernacle, which is, does great work in the community and is working to raise funds for youth programs, had contacted the city on March 18th, which was in advance of the statutorily established deadline of March 31st and had received notice that their business license application was incomplete and that they would need to go through the process. And somehow, between then, the deadline, and in June, there was just a miscommunication on behalf of the people that were handling the fireworks application process. I understand there was a new person. I understand there was a new person. This group has had a fireworks booth for many years, and, and apparently there was, was just a miscommunication. And so when this matter came to the attention of, of one of their advocates and representatives, they did ask that it be put on the agenda. Because it is an ordinance, it was beyond my authority to grant any exceptions, and because they had, because there was clearly demonstration that they were aware of the situation, it is not something that would have normally gone on the agenda. And so I wanted to make that clear as to why this process has gone forward the way it has, but I, I also wanted to communicate that we, we certainly understand that, that sometimes things happen and miscommunications happen, and we, we certainly are sympathetic to the cause of Community Praise Tabernacle and their desire to use their fireworks booth as a fundraiser for the, for the youth. So I believe that there are representatives in the audience to speak to this matter and be happy to address any questions that the council may have that can't be addressed by the Community Praise Tabernacle.
Thank you. From the councils, are there any comments or questions?
I have a comment. I read through the materials and have spoken to some of the people involved with the church, and my personal feelings are that they had every intent, this group, to have a fireworks booth, and I totally support the item to make this be what it should have been, since there was misunderstandings from various parts of the process.
I know it won't happen again. One of the items that our founding fathers on July 6, 1776 commented that this is a great day, referring to July 4th, and that we shall celebrate with fireworks and other displays of military grandeur. So let's not disappoint the founding fathers. But with that, I, any other comments before we have public comment? Any public comment on item 6.1?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. My name is Reverend Charles Neal. I'm here tonight to represent Community Praise Tabernacle. They're having a service tonight, so they couldn't, couldn't be here. Their service is on Tuesday, Thursday, and Sunday evenings. But I'd like to thank the mayor and the city manager for putting this item on the agenda. It was, like said, a misunderstanding, a miscommunication by, you know, volunteers. Sometimes, you know, in churches and organizations, we have to use new people that come in, and they just weren't fully up to, to scale on this particular thing, and it got kind of sidelined because the, the new volunteers thought that they had been misled some way or another, and said that the fire department was taking care of the things this year. So they went there and they thought it was all taken care of, but then when the pastor found that it wasn't, then he started trying to put together whatever it took in order for them to have their fireworks stand, because they do make a considerable amount of money at those fireworks stands, and it all goes to the youth and to the betterment of the community. We'd asked tonight that you approve this. We understand, we have all the necessary paperwork. Tomorrow morning, it'll be in the office for Annabelle at 8 o'clock. Everything will be laying right there for her. It's all, I've looked over every bit of it. It's, it's exactly what's asked for, and they have all the necessary paperwork, and they'll have it there tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. And they want to thank you in advance for any decision that you make and understand that, you know, that, and ask that you make a decision based on, you know, what's best for the community and for the youth and for the kids, and understand that, you know, there was a simple mistake made, and I'd like to correct it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Saying none, I bring it back to the City Council for a recommendation or further comments.
I make a motion that we accept item 6.1.
I'll second that motion.
By accepting, you mean approving?
Approve it.
We have a motion to approve item 6.1 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
While we're waiting for Barbara Martinez.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. I'd like to thank the staff for understanding. Appreciate it.
Ms. Kathleen Kleek will be presenting the next staff report on stormwater standards. We'd like to grab our Vice Mayor so she can return.
We can't do it without, oh, you gotta grab, thank you.
Kathleen's gonna do double duty here. Thank you. Because we don't want anybody to miss the discussion on post-construction standards on stormwater management.
Item 6.2, adopt the post-construction standards plan for the City of Riverbank.
Mayor, members of the City Council, as I did mention earlier this evening during the strategic plan update, we've been talking a lot about stormwater, and this evening, our, our manager of Development Services Administration will be presenting an overview of proposed standards for post-construction. Basically, this is a requirement to make sure that any, any new projects meet those stormwater requirements for maintaining and treating stormwater in, in new ways to present any pollution, and which is a good, which is ultimately a very good thing. So at this time, Ms. Kathleen Kleek will be presenting an overview of the plan that's being proposed for your consideration this evening.
Good evening again, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This is our last requirement that we need to bring to you to meet our year-two stormwater requirement, so we are excited about that. Tonight, we're going to go over the post-construction standards plan, which is another requirement of our MS2 stormwater permit. So the recommendation, MS4, sorry, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Missed that one.
I just was making sure that you were listening, so.
Thank you.
So recommendation, or recommending tonight, the City Council adopt the post-construction standards plan as a guidance document detailing stormwater post-construction design measures for developers and plan checkers. So this will be used by us in-house as well as the developers. So some background, in July 2013, the city compiled, complied with the small MS4 general permit and filed a notice of intent that specifies actions and activities required by the city. During year two of the plan, municipalities are required to develop and implement a post-construction standards plan as a guidance document on stormwater post-construction design measures for developers and plan checkers. The city collaborated with WGR, Environmental Health and Safety Consultants, along with 17 different Central Valley municipalities, to share the cost in developing a standardized plan. Developers can follow this plan to meet the Phase II MS4 requirements, and the collaboration on the plan allows for a regional training of the plan checkers on this common plan, saving more cost and time for each municipality. So the reason for the plan, California State Water Resources Control Board states that increasing urbanization through new development and redevelopment has been shown to cause more frequent stormwater discharge events, higher peak flow velocities, and larger volumes of stormwater runoff. These conditions affect water quality and contribute to drainage system erosion. Deteriorated waterways have a direct impact on the municipalities by causing them to perform more maintenance on existing systems and to develop new drainage systems with higher Manage stormwater discharges from new development and redevelopment projects. Small municipalities have been identified by the state to obtain permit coverage under the Phase II MS4 permit. And in the permit, the city is required to implement a stormwater management program to require new development and applicable redevelopment projects to incorporate post-construction stormwater control measures into their designs. So an overview of the requirements, condition certain small projects to implement one or more site design measures that treat stormwater runoff using methods to evapo, transpire, infiltrate, harvest and reuse, or biotreat. Large projects will need to implement one or more site design measures and implement specific source control measures to minimize the impact of pollutant generating activities, incorporate specific low-impact development standards, and hydro modification management measures that slow and minimize the amount of runoff. So the contents of the plan, the plan contains applicability of the project, submittal and review process, requirements for small projects, regulated projects, operation and maintenance of post-construction measures, and municipal specific information. Also provides developers and municipal plan checkers with information on how to meet the state water board's requirements for mitigating the negative impact of increase in stormwater runoff caused by new development and redevelopment. Plan includes information on low-impact development standards, infiltration, capture, reuse, and biotreatment to mimic the runoff of natural environment. Hydro modification techniques are used to design development sites so that post-construction runoff flow rates do not exceed those of the pre-construction conditions. Developers will be equipped with information to submit a package to the city that will adequately demonstrate how the project will meet the LID and hydro modification requirements. Plan checkers will be able to use the plan to objectively and sufficiently condition discretionary projects with the required post-construction stormwater design requirements. The financial impact and staff time to educate the developers and city staff on the requirements and implementation of the plan. An obligation will create a demand on the city's construction inspector, planning and building manager, administrative personnel in meeting the requirement of the permit. Any questions or comments?
In the next coming year, if we have major rain events, one of the things we've done was to pump water out from our collection basins almost immediately. Is there any plan to delay that to allow some filtration down? I could see getting rid of it if we have major events after, you know, one after the other, but is there, are we adjusting any of our operations?
Let me call Michael Riddell.
Just just information on, I'm just.
Yeah, our Public Works Superintendent, he'll be able to answer that.
I read the report and I go, well, what are we doing to modify this?
Yeah, we, we have had some discussions within the division, in other words, within the Streets Division, on, on how we want to approach this, and we'll take a look at as we get more towards the rainy season, and we will have some big events. We'll, we'll adjust as we go, and we do have quite a bit of capacity to hold, so we're, our intent is to hold as much as we possibly can without endangering, obviously, any of the residential areas or anything with flooding.
I need that, thank you. Any comments, questions? Are there any comments or questions on item 6.2 on the adoption of the post-construction standard plan for the City of Riverbank? Saying none, I bring this back to the City Council for further comments and/or action.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 6.2.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item 6.2 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, staff. That was very well done. Item 7.1, staff comments.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, first, I'd like to thank the council for your support of the budget this evening and your, the number of hours that you spent in workshops and reviewing the budget in anticipation and preparation for tonight's meeting. Just definitely appreciate your support. Also, at this time, I'd like to have Michael Riddell, our Public Works Superintendent, provide an update on the drought and the city's response to the drought.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. So we're now into the first month of the Governor's Executive Order on the mandated reductions of the 32% for our city. We won't know those numbers until we get mid-July. We have taken, there's a couple of things that's been coming up, and, and the city manager I had talked about, and this, and the, the state drought report that came out on June the 9th, and how good their PR person was with their first paragraph. So I'm going to kind of relay to you the information that they put out, which is the state water board reports improved urban conservation for April on June the 2nd. The state water board reported April statewide water conservation rate at 13.5%. April's reduction in water use represents a boosting in, in the water conservation efforts over March's 3.9%. In addition, nearly 400 water suppliers responded to a first-ever enforcement report indicating a high level of local activity to respond to reports of leaks and suspected water wasting from June 2014 to April 2015, and the state has conserved more than 175 billion gallons of water. Keep in mind, we have that executive order that Governor Brown has stated that the state will reduce water 25% on an aggregated rate, in other words, throughout the whole, and some have to reduce more than others. So within, for us, for the water use for the month of May 2015, we had 130 gallon per capita per day use. So in other words, every person in this city used 130 gallons per day. That, based on our May 2013 uses, which the, what the, the state water board and the Governor's Office will be looking at would equate to a 16% reduction. So as you can see, in the month of May, we, if we had to meet the 32, we wouldn't have done it. Our target numbers for June is 148 gallons per capita per day, based on our June 2013 numbers. We have, as you know, since June the 10th, we have had a water conservation coordinator out on the streets. She has, to this point, had well over 200 contacts with people, actually explaining to them what the ordinance is, what they're required to do, and, and verbally warning them if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. After the initial first week or so, we then rolled into issuing the warning citations and citations. So to this date, we have issued 89 written warnings, and we have also issued two first violation warnings for the, through the water conservation coordinator's efforts. So I, I do believe with the efforts there that we're going through, and we are having a lot of positive feedback coming back from the residents within the city on the newsletter that we sent out that asked for the voluntary reduction to two days a week. So we have been seeing a lot of that, too. So I am hoping that when we get into July and I get the production numbers from June, we will meet that per capita reduction, but that will re-remain to be seen. And I, as always, will caveat, my report with the City of Riverbank does not have any water quality or quantity problems. Any questions?
I have a question. Are there any water conservation monies being offered by the state or even the federal government that we could possibly tie into, say, to help the people that wanted to do it, to say, do drought tolerant vegetation instead of grass? Or even hot water recirculating systems that could save a terrific amount of money in wa, in water? Is anything available like that?
Well, the only thing that's currently available in that aspect of it, and yet the money has not been released, is the removal of turf.
Okay.
And there are already some cities that are putting that out there, but they're capping it. And to kind of put that in perspective, is, is that if you're offering a dollar per square foot, up to a $500 maximum. I know of, of an individual that basically took a look at removing his turf and had a landscaper come in and give him an estimate for coming into drought tolerant, and the $500 would have covered a $500 worth, a $6,500 worth of making it drought tolerant. So the money that's being put out there for the removal of turf is, unless you're going to go to just dirt, or get you a couple of rocks and put out in the middle of it, then it's really not going to cover the turf, so I don't see that that's going to be an incentive. However, there will be funding available for it.
Okay.
And obviously, when that funding comes available, we will look at tapping into it.
Thank you.
I have a.
But that's not current.
No.
And the governor does not want to make it current. He wants to make it his deal in the next budget.
Right. He has not funded it yet.
Are there incentives for water faucets in your home to get those little replacement faucets that will limit or lower the amount of water that's flowing?
You're talking about the restrictors and that type of thing?
Yes.
On the defusers? No, we don't currently have any kind of incentive out there for that, nor does the state offer anything.
Okay, thanks.
Well, to quote Dan Quell, "The future will be better tomorrow."
That was right after you spelled potato, right?
So who knows? The future may be better tomorrow.
Well, it's, it's going to rain. That's what's going to happen. It's going to rain.
Thank you.
Staff, continue.
Yes, and then also wanted to just encourage everybody to just stay very safe this 4th of July. Things are very dry. It's sort of odd that we've been talking so much about stormwater and we all are praying that we have a mild storm, and we have frequent mild storms. But at this point, things are very dry, as we talked about when, when Michelle Guzman, our representative of the fire board, was here. The fire district's very busy. And so people do use extra caution this 4th of July. Also, too, is the heat, as summer heats up, there will be cooling centers and cooling zones available. The city hall provides a cooling zone on those days where the heat index hits certain, certain point where people can come to city hall. They can get, they can enjoy our air conditioning and can get a respite. Other places for that are, of course, our movie theaters, and we have a great one here in the city with Galaxy Theater. We also, shopping centers, and even fast casual restaurants. You could go to Crossroads, you can, you can get a Starbucks even at Target. So we encourage people who, who don't have air conditioning to take respite from the heat on those days where it does get very, very warm. So as, we do not have another council meeting until July 28th. And this is the last council meeting of the fiscal year. And so I would like to thank the staff who did so much work in regards to preparing the budget. Clearly, that process is led by Maricela Garcia. Kathleen has been leading the effort on stormwater management with a lot of support from Michael Riddell and Maricela and Peter Lilonas, our construction inspector, as well as other members of the staff. But each and every member of the staff contributes to serving the public, and we appreciate the community we serve. They have been incredibly supportive of us as well. And I do not take that trust lightly. I know the council does not take that trust lightly. And so I just wanted to publicly thank each, each member of our, our community as well as the staff. And again, thank the city council for your support of me, your city manager, as well as the staff that I lead. Very much appreciate this community and your leadership of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
I just had, just one thing, and it was kind of mentioned from Ms. Anderson already. And just to comment that we are getting close to 4th of July, and we just really need to beware out there. It's fire season, we heard the fire captain and the representative talk about, that it's going to be a scary season, and they are already gearing up for that. So I think we just need to, to remember some of that stuff and, and beware out there. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
I would just like to also thank the staff for the tremendous job they've done in organizing the materials they presented to us in the past few meetings to help us make the decisions to keep this city going on. I know there's a lot of work and research that goes into this type of thing, and we appreciate it up here. It helps us make our decisions. Likewise, as councilmember Jones Cruz said, we are coming into the 4th of July, and we just had an example of it a few days ago down in the river bottom where there was a fire. And that fire was created mainly because it started somewhere and the wind blew it across and then it spread. And so we have to be just doubly cautious this 4th of July, this 4th of July period, that if there, especially there are winds, we have to stay on top of what's going on because we need to let the fire department know right away, because part of their problem is lots of fires are happening at the same times, and this is liquidating their services, so there's just not enough of them to do it. So just tell your neighbors and everyone, be very careful this 4th of July.
Councilmember Tucker?
I would just ditto, echo the comments made previously about the fire season that we're facing. I work up in the foothills, and we've already seen several fires up there in just the last few days. So it's going to be extra, extra important that everybody's really careful with their safe and sane, quote unquote, fireworks this year and that we not have any illegal fireworks used at all. Just want to reiterate for folks, the watering schedule, some people really have not understood what their watering days are. If you, if your address ends in an odd number, you should be watering on Mondays and Fridays. If it ends in an even number, you should be watering on Tuesday and Saturday. And no watering should be taking place on Sundays, Wednesdays, or Thursdays. So I just want to make sure everybody hears that message loud and clear. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Earlier, our city manager mentioned in our strategic plan about our gang awareness presentation. So I'd like to thank Deputy Humbo, Detective Torres, and Chief Kylie for their presentation that was presented last week and at St. Francis of Rome. And we will also be planning another session in the next couple of weeks. And a reminder about our family night out at the farmer's market every Wednesday until September 2nd. We have live entertainment, free movies during the months of June and July, and also keeping with our campaign for the city of healthy eating and active living, we do have free Zumba from 6 to 7 p.m. So come on out and learn more about our Market Match program for fruits and vegetables. And now soon about the annual kids' health and safety bicycle rodeo fair, which is going to be on July 1st. And that will be during the family night out at the farmer's market from 5 to 8. We have many activities that are being planned for that night. And don't know if you know, but July is the, July 2015 is the celebration of 30 years for Park and Recreation Month. And parks were created to serve the people, to give them a place for appreciation of our nature, exercise, socializing, and also to have fun. So we do have several parks in our city, as you already know. But please help to keep them clean. And again, from me, too, as everyone has said, Happy July 4th. And please remember to be safe and responsible with fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to also thank the vice mayor and the chief for your efforts on the gangs. Please keep that up. I know you're, you're really pushing hard on that. Again, to the rest of the staff, thank you very much. And to all out there, please have it very safe. Enjoy us 4th of July. Thank you and have a good evening. Meetings adjourned.